Twenty-one, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtswell. We'll move on to the roll call this evening. I know Councilmember Richards was having some technical issues. I'm hopeful that he will be able to join us here very shortly. Please remember to state your location after mentioning that you are present. Councilmember Kittle.
Here, I'm in the city of South Lyon.
Thank you, Councilmember Dill.
Present, City of South Lyon.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton.
Present, City of South Lyon.
Councilmember Kurtswell?
Present, City of South Lyon.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Present, City of South Lyon.
Councilmember Richards, please remember to state your location after mentioning that you're present.
Present in South Lyon at home.
Mayor Pellchat is also present and at the City of South Lyon City Hall. We will move on to the approval of the minutes, March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one. Councilmember Kittle?
About a third of the way down on page. It states, Councilman Kibble stated he is fine either way. The problem will be if there is enough conflict to, that you can't come to consensus on someone being appointed. Chances are, there will be tension as it goes forward until the election, and it needs to be added, so you better buckle up. And then mid-page of page six, Councilman Kibble stated the issue isn't with this council, it is about how the charter looks at this, and then insert at this issue. Anytime the situation comes up irrespective of who's on council, we're trying to fix something that doesn't, and it says fix in the minutes, and it should say exist right now. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kittle. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Let's go ahead and move the minutes as amended.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the minutes? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Move on to the approval of the bills this evening. Councilmember Kennedy?
I can go ahead and move the bills.
I support.
I have, I have a question on bills.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Further discussion will go to you, Councilmember Richards.
Okay, going through things, I had a number of questions that I can't bring up at a council meeting because I got to clear them with Patricia, I guess first, but if we go to the very last page, the most serious one I'm concerned with is where it says the summation of wages paid to the employees payroll reports. The second one down, it says cemetery. And it says a hundred and four thousand dollars unless I'm reading it for police, okay? Okay, maybe I'm, maybe I'm reading it wrong, okay? One, two, three.
Patricia, could you go ahead and speak to that for us? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Richards, yes, that is cemetery. I'll, next time I'll put a zero there. But that should be a blank line, and for police, it should be a hundred and four thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and sixteen cents.
Okay, all cleared up. Also, on the inside page, just one mention, I think we need to look at on page four of six. At the, towards the bottom, it call, it says Batco Corporation, Batco Incorporated. Sewer and water line locators, eighty-seven, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars, twenty-seven cents. I found that bill to have been paid four times. And I'm, my question is, is this a purchase or a rental or? And if it is a purchase, we're purchasing this equipment, are we still going to be charged by HRC for finding the location of the sewer lines and how clean they are? I hope you can find that. We've done a lot of business with Batco, I understand that. I'd just like clarification on this.
Patricia, go ahead.
Thank you. Councilmember Richards, it's listed three times on the invoice GL distribution report because it's listed by account number that that amount was taken from. So it was a total bill that was split between three different accounts. So if you look all the way over to the left where it says GL number, it'll show you the different accounts. So that, so I apologize for the confusion, but the way this report runs is that it splits it by the different accounts.
Okay, I see the number. Yeah, okay, all right. Well, this question remains, are we buying this equipment? Or are we renting it, or is that the normal fee for their services?
I apologize, that would be Doug Varney question. I don't know if he's available.
Okay. Okay, that's all my questions. If you can't, we can put it away till another time.
All right, and he, you might be able to ask that later too, Councilmember Richards. We have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion on the bills this evening? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of tonight's agenda? Councilmember Kennedy?
Move the agenda.
I support.
Motion in a second.
Mayor Pellchat, do we have to amend it because there was a, something that came to us late? I wasn't sure if we needed to amend it. I thought there was something in Lisa's email that said that.
I don't believe so. Did I, City Clerk Deaton, go ahead.
There was a change in the agenda note, but it was just a change in the account number.
Okay.
So I don't think you need to amend it for that reason.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good question. So we have a motion in a second to move the agenda. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll move on to tonight's consent agenda. On that, we have for number one, Lake Street Cruisin' twenty-twenty-one and Motor Fest twenty-twenty-one. Councilmember Dill?
I'd like to take both of those off and move into a new business. I have some questions and I wanted to talk about some stuff on those.
Both of those?
Yes, please.
So we will make that number three and number four. And with that, I think we just move forward, right? Now that we, we're going to put that on to our new business, okay? At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Please remember your name and address, and please remember to stick to the two-minute time limit. City Clerk Deaton, you're muted.
Now, we have two people with their hands raised. This one is Ryan Lair.
Okay.
So go ahead and allow him to talk.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. I have some wonderful news to present tonight. Last week, I spent an hour and a half cleaning up Paul Baker Park and Ronald Sweet Parkway and around the police department and behind the police department. I noticed a lot of trash that needed to be cleaned up, so I took the scooter out and got my little fork thing, whatever you want to call it, a little grab hook, whatever, and I cleaned up over one and a half bags of trash. And I wanted to thank all the residents that stopped and, and, and thanked me for taking the time to do that and clean up their, our city. As your ambassador of South Lyon, I, I look forward to keeping our city beautiful. And I plan to see you guys all for the cleanup coming up, this Sunday coming up. And I did mention to Larry that the parking lot in front of the police station and the fire department is full of trash and mass and debris. And he has added that to his list. I believe Councilman Richards is going to be speaking about the cleanup later in his comments. I'm not entirely sure on that, but Larry Ledbetter has added that to the list. So that whole parking lot will be completely cleaned up next Sunday, and that's all I have tonight. And I'd like to thank the public once again for stopping and saying hello and congratulating me. It was, it was a wonderful thing to do and spend my time doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lair.
We have one more person with her hand raised, Linda.
Good evening, everyone. This is Linda Hyata, and I'm coming to visit from Senator Jim Runstead's office to find out the City of South Lyon. I just wanted to remind everyone that our office is available for phone calls, emails, we have a website, Facebook page. We've helped literally, I want to say over a thousand people get their unemployment benefits to them over the course of the last year, but we do all kinds of assistance for, to connect people with agencies. To help municipalities receive grants or do research. Just more things than, than people can imagine. If you have any problems that you need assistance with, if you have ideas, or if you want to give your opinion on some legislation, or if you think some legislation needs to happen, if you ever think there ought to be a law, give us a phone call. We talk to hundreds of people a week. We're waiting to hear from you. We're available. And thank you very much. Oh, I want to, I want to say one other thing. Thank you very much to Ryan Lair for being an ambassador and such a great great model for other citizens. Thank you for helping cleaning up South Lyon, and I want to find out if anybody on the council knows where I can get more information about the cleanup this weekend.
City Clerk Deaton, is that available on the city website?
It is.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Does that look like that's it for public comment? City Clerk Deaton, thank you.
There's no other hands raised.
Okay. Thank you to Senator Runstead's office and Linda, who does a great job of staying in touch with us out here. We're very fortunate. A lot of our, many of our representatives that represent us are making sure to get out here and stay in touch, and that's appreciated. So thank you to her. We will, at this time, close public comment. And we'll move on to the discussion of downtown with our DDA Director Nate Mack.
All right, thanks, Mayor Pellchat. The DDA Board met last Thursday, and during the meeting, there was discussion regarding an opportunity for recovery planning for the downtown with the National Main Street Center. It was my intention to get the date set up for that planning, however, the Oakland County contacted me the day before the meeting and said to hold off because they're still finishing their budget and working out funds for that. Other items that came up at the meeting was discussion of the variance request at two-two-two Lafayette Street. We approved a new volunteer for the Promotions Committee. All four of the newly formed DDA committees have met and have been productive. I think one of the more exciting things that the Design Committee is working on is kind of sprucing up the alley between Twelve Kitchen Elves and Bob's Barbershop. We're going to be meeting there on Wednesday to kind of look at the space, to visualize it better, and I'm going to be working on cleaning it up. And, you know, maybe putting some stain on the planners just to make them look a little more inviting. And we're going to be, you know, just making that look a little bit better for people so that they, they feel more welcome when they're coming down there. Through the Promotions Committee, we're also looking to offer an internship to a high school student in journalism class to help manage our Instagram account. So I'm putting together an application for them, and then members of our Promotions Committee are reaching out to their contacts in the high school to see if there are any students that may be interested. And we're thinking the length of the internship, depending on the interest that we have, will be about one month. So going off of that, I know in my, in my report last week, I mentioned that I was developing a business retention and expansion, expansion survey. However, I'm going to hold off, I'm still developing it, but I'm going to hold off on conducting it until I hear back from Oakland County because part of that recovery planning process, you do a survey getting, you know, your residents attitudes and businesses attitudes on how things are going for them currently. The farmer's market is set to open May first. We've received some additional guidance from the Farmers Market Association that I'll be going over to ensure we're in compliance with all of the state regulations. But with that being said, we've been successful obtaining sponsorships, and we're really looking forward to a safe and successful market season. I believe we have food trucks set up for every farmer's market date, and we have a lot of returning vendors from last year. For the survey that the, the task force sent out, I believe an update from the report when it was sent out, we're at twenty-four responses now, so we're getting some good feedback from businesses, kind of gauging how they feel the task force is doing and how we can continue to assist them. What else do we have here? And regarding the flowers, so I've touched base with Donahue Farms. We're all set to go with the flowers. They said that they potentially could be ready before Memorial Day, however, we'll have them for sure by Memorial Day. So we're all set there, and if there's any questions, be happy to answer them.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question, and then I'll have a little bit of follow-up depending on what we talk about, but, um, so my question is on Ladies Night. So I don't think you've been around for a Ladies Night before, and I know we talked about this earlier, but Ladies Night has become really popular, and there's just tons of, of women come for this, and there's men there too. And I know I spoke with several businesses about, that are on the DDA about how they're going to do protocols and things like that. My concern is just that I've been involved in these, and it's very difficult without COVID to get in and shop and, and, you know, get, get around all the businesses. And I think now with the protocols, the lines that will be outside could be pretty extensive. So I know that I, I asked you this, and I've asked Paul before, if there is some way that we can shut down the street and make Ladies Night more open so that we can do, so that the businesses can still get the same kind of business that they've gotten, that they can get some of the, you know, the some of the restaurants can maybe get some more seating or something that we can do to, to open that up a little bit more and make it more you know, so it's not frustrating for the people who want to get into the businesses, and it's not a headache for the businesses who are trying to maintain social distancing. So I guess that's all.
Okay. So yeah, I will reach out to the Oakland County Road Commission and see if we can't get, get something done for the, for the event.
Well, I was just, I know, Paul, we have talked about that before, and I know you were concerned with thinking that there might be too many times that we shut down the road, and I know that when I talked to you about it before, you said, well, there's only so many times we can shut down the road in a year. And that there are some issues with, with police or liability and things like that, so I wondered if those are all still concerns as well.
Yeah, they're definitely still concerns. You know, we are worried about rerouting of traffic during rush hour on a Friday evening coming downtown and how we get all those people around the street because it's not just between Whipple Street and, you know, Ten Mile. We're talking about shutting your southeast-west. It's very difficult to get four hours of the road to be shut down and getting people rerouted through subdivision streets. You know, that's something that we can look at to find out ways that we can try to help that out. You know, with the first year, three years ago, we shut down East Lake Street between Wells and Pontiac Trail. And that really didn't, you know, pan out. There really wasn't the gathering that we thought there would be there. We had tables that were set out there, but it wasn't really used. But with COVID concerns, it's something else that we can still talk about, and we'll try to make, we'll try to have those discussions very quickly and include the police department and fire department as well.
I, and I was just wondering, I mean, I know that we are talking tonight about the Cruisin' and the Motor Fest, and it seems, and those were just on a consent agenda that we were all going to just vote for. So I'm just interested to know why those don't seem to be as much of a concern as Ladies Night seems.
Well, the one, one event is, you know, is, is much bigger, but the other one is just weak lane. It's just on East Lake Street. You know, and Wells and that area, so it's not shutting down north, north and south Pontiac Trail. That's, that's the real difficulty that we have for rerouting traffic around downtown.
But Motor Fest is, right?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, so I would just, I'm just asking.
Talking about that day, but I believe that is on a Saturday. That's not on a Friday during the day, so let's, there's a difference between rush hour and shutting something down during Saturday, but we can certainly talk about that and obviously get the, both public safety people participating regarding those discussions tonight too.
Right, so I was just asking if we could give it some of the same consideration. I would appreciate it. I know there's some differences. So that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Walton? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nate, when you talked about flowers, that, did that include the memorial and public park and downtown, or what all does that include?
Paul Baker Park and downtown, I believe.
So you did not add the two additional pots for the memorial?
I didn't, but I can add those.
Okay, I think we talked about that at a past meeting recently.
Okay. I will make a note of it, and I'll call, I'll call them tomorrow and, and add those too.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Kurtswell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nate, I just wanted to let you know that, that tract of land that is downtown and it's where the architectural firm is. I, I know that owner, and he has offered to allow the city to explore options with him in using that property for, for a DDA function like on a Friday night. Like maybe to put a, like what they do in Ann Arbor, like just to put somebody there playing a guitar or, you know, some street music or something like that. The only thing he would ask is that the city indemnify him on an insurance policy. But if you're interested or if the DDA is interested, give me a call, and I have his contact information.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, I'll, I'll give you a call. Sounds great. Thank you.
Councilmember Kittle?
Yes, I was, I was wondering, I saw that one-ten Detroit has sold again. And, or is up for sale, I should say, and I was wondering how that's going to impact the timeline of, of what our reaction is going to be as far as trying to get something moving in the right direction.
I believe it has sold.
It's up for sale right now.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a cash-only hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars for what's there. So I'm sure that that's, that's already a bump up from what it had gone originally, so that's kind of concerning because it sort of leads me to believe that it'll end up being a teardown. It's being marketed as you could live in a historic home downtown. But when you get a buck sixty-nine by what's there and how much it would cost to refurb that, that's getting pretty pricey, so. The, the second thing I wanted to ask about was, we have those, those little shelters that have been helping people, or helping the restaurants during the course of winter and COVID. I was wondering, would that stuff be available, any of those be available in the event that there's inclement weather for Ladies Night Out? Could we make those part of, of parking lot, or maybe even use the architect, I forgot his name, Jarrett's, maybe Jarrett would let us have access to park a couple of them on that open lot, so. Just something to consider at least.
Yeah, so we would want to avoid groups of people from different households gathering in that small of a space.
That's true, yeah.
So I don't think, I'd want to use them for that purpose during the event. But we do have them available to us when the restaurants no longer are using them to, you know, once we get out of COVID, if we want to use them for a warming space for an event in the future or something like that, we can do that.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I, actually, I'm not very COVID savvy. I, I pretty much have been staying away from most of it, so. Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, you're right.
If you know, if you find out anything about Detroit Street though, I'd really like to know because if there are some, something that we could do to try to entice anything about that, it'd be really helpful to try to save that building. Thanks.
Anyone else have anything for Nate tonight? All right, thanks, Nate. That was a great update.
Thank you.
Move on to the Fire Chief Report, and Chief Vogel.
Good evening, Mayor, thank you. As I look at the list of people on Zoom, apparently I've cloned myself three times, so. You guys get three of me tonight.
One's enough.
Yeah. So we have started flushing the hydrants again. So those, if you see the fire truck in your neighborhood, you might see some red water. It's good for the system, it's good for the hydrants, and that's why we do it. Secondly, the rest of the extrication grant equipment arrived next week, last week, excuse me. I'm pretty excited about that. FEMA paid for the equipment. And finally, the, those of you know that we had another gas leak in Colonial Acres. I have invoiced the vendor for Xfinity both times. First time we were there for two hours, last week we were there for three hours. So we did invoice. There were some questions about that. It appears both times that they hit lines that were marked, so that's why I felt justified in the invoicing. So that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Anyone got anything for Chief? Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Chief Vogel, did that, the invoicing, that included man hours as well as equipment hours that were also on site?
Yeah, so I'll use the last. I take the personnel hours times by three. There is a formula that Patricia has and FEMA has for the two engines in a ladder truck. And I think that's all I billed for the second time. The first time we also billed because they spilled antifreeze on the road. So I billed for the street sweeper, the floor dry that we used, the apparatus, and the personnel.
Sounds great, Chief. Appreciate it.
I think they're done there. I believe that that was their last dig when they hit that line last week.
They've paid enough.
I do expect some pushback, but I feel confident in the, the city charter that we should have a strong case for collecting.
Councilmember Kurtswell?
Well, even if we, we do stumble a little bit and don't get the full boat, I, I like us putting pressure on people that they have to perform properly, so that's helpful. I was wondering, did, did the fire department have an access to the Detroit aerial that you were hoping to be able to experiment with?
So I think Weir is on the call. That is in our future. We thought we had a lead on one to go see down in Indiana, but we found out that that was not exactly what we needed to see. I still expect Weir and his committee to go out to Nebraska sometime in the future, May, maybe June, I'm not sure. That would be a question for him. And I still confirm that that truck, the demo, will be here in May. And I will send out an invite, and I hope everyone can come and see the truck, play with the truck. That, we were told that we are the first stop when it leaves the factory.
Terrific. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kurtswell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, Chief Vogel, with respect to the chargeback, I think it's important for the contractors to realize that when they disrupt like they did with the gas lines, it takes like they did with the gas lines, it takes away resources from the community. I mean, you're being pulled out of the community. Several firefighters are being pulled out of the community. Uh, some of our equipment is pulled out of the community and particularly at a time where you've had an incredibly busy, uh, year. So I think they need to understand that, uh, they're pulling very valuable resources out of this community when they do something like that. So I, I, I sure hope they don't argue with the chargebacks.
Well, I hope not either, but it, it happened before when they were doing the same project three years ago in Trotters. Um, what really was frustrating about this incident, the latest one was it was so close to the homes. We had to evacuate four sets of buildings and it was very challenging. Luckily, every resident was very helpful. You know, I've learned in my years that if we worry about the four P's, purse, pills, pet and phone, these people will evacuate. So I was able to get ahold of the phase five clubhouse. And I think they felt comfortable going there. And that's where we put them and they stayed there for three hours and they were all very friendly. I, I tried to keep them updated. And, you know, how long it took them. I think they might've been out of their place for four hours actually, because when MichCon got there after three hours, they kind of took over. And I, I think they, I think so. I think they were evacuated for four hours.
Anyone else have anything for Chief Vogel this evening? Thank you, Chief. Move on to the police report and Chief Sobek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's get one thing this evening. Uh, I just wanted to say what an outstanding job I think the city manager, Paul and Patricia did uh, in preparing our budget. I know I've had several meetings and I've had pre discussion meetings and pre uh, everything meeting. And I know from a law enforcement perspective, a lot of times the execution really depends on how well you prepare. And so I think they just did a fantastic job preparing this, uh, preparing the budget and also the, the physically the packet that they provided for us. But uh, I think it really showed in the, uh, the budget workshop meeting how well that they were prepared. So, uh, to Paul and Patricia, uh, just a great job on that. And, um, it just seems to be getting smoother every year after year. So, uh, well done on that.
Thanks, Chief Sobek. Does anyone have anything for Chief Sobek this evening? All right. Great. Um, tonight we do have a special recognition for our police and fire and first responders that I'm going to read here. On March 24th at approximately 6:00 PM, South Line firefighters and police were dispatched to the 1100 block of Polo Drive to investigate an unresponsive 59-year-old female that was not breathing. Upon arrival, South Line police officers located the individual on the ground and quickly determined she was not breathing and were able to find a pulse. Officers, we're not able to find a pulse, excuse me. Officers immediately began rendering life-saving measures which included CPR, venting and deploying an AED. Officers administered one shock with the AED. Firefighters along with Huron Valley ambulance personnel quickly applied a Lucas chest compression device and continued CPR. Within minutes, the victim's pulse was restored and she began breathing on her own. HVA along with South Line firefighters transported the woman to a local hospital. Since the incident occurred, the individual has been released from the hospital and is recovering at home. Tonight, we recognize South Line Police Officers Sergeant Baker, Officer Tomlin and Officer Walton, along with South Line Firefighters Deputy Chief Weir, Lieutenant Conrad, firefighter Hopkins and firefighter Shipley for their quick response and heroic actions. Incredible. Um, and if anyone has anything that they'd like to add to that, um, let me just say it never gets old. Um, getting notes from our community or a press release like this that explains to people in the community what exactly our first responders are doing and capable of. Councilmember Dill?
I just wanted to say thank you and, and note that on top of everything else that our first responders have had to deal with this year that seemed so different in the last four months that they've had to deal with, um, that I've, things I've never seen happen in our city before. Um, and I just, uh, really appreciate all that they do and that they, that we don't, um, have the same kind of situations that you see around, um, the country sometimes with, uh, community and, and, uh, police and, um, you know, in conflict. I just really like that everyone's working together and I really appreciate the work that they did to save this woman's life. I want to say thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Dill. Great comments. Councilmember Kibble, and then I'll come to you, Councilmember Kennedy.
I was just, uh, just thinking that Lucas chest compression device, is that getting used as often as you had anticipated?
I would say more than I thought.
Is that right?
We used it at that call that we speak of. It was used this weekend. It, it, it's a game changer. I'm truly happy that we received two on a grant. And it's probably in my years, I have not seen a tool that's been as made such a difference to the fire service like I've seen the Lucas device. It literally has changed how we do CPR. Um, and, and the results have been pretty great. And then that call we speak of is, is something that I think was a team effort. It was the AED and the Lucas and great people.
Yeah. Everybody seemed to have played a, a strong role in getting that satisfaction. I was just kind of curious about that because it seemed when you were talking about, uh, receiving this equipment that, um, you had high hopes that it would end up doing just what you're suggesting it's doing. Um, you know, that, and keeping our guys where you don't have to worry about somebody gets fatigued and they're still being able to, to get the benefit of what the equipment can do. So I'm, I'm really tickled to hear that. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, uh, recognize and compliment the firefighters and police officers that were identified in the, uh, in the effort here for their professionalism and obviously the results of their efforts. So job well done.
Councilmember Walton?
I'd like to mirror those comments. We have an incredible, um, team of firefighters and police personnel. And we, we, they never disappoint. So thank you for taking the time and the efforts and making sure that this woman and all of our community are safe.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Uh, Chief, did you have something really quickly?
Oh, I'll go after Councilwoman Kurzweil.
Yep. Thank you. Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I want to, uh, also thank, uh, the individuals that were involved in this very heroic mission. But I think what's also important is I would like to thank council for funding and providing the financial resources to our fire and police department in order for them to have the training and to have the equipment necessary to save lives and to make our city safe. Those communities that are struggling, are struggling because they made different financial decisions than what we're making here in the city of South Lyon. And I think that that result is obvious in paying incredible dividends for the welfare and the safety of the people in our community. So thank you, council for continued support for funding of our fire and police departments.
Chief Vogel, go ahead.
Um, I just want to add to what Councilwoman Kurzweil just said. On, on behalf of Chief Sobek and myself, I think the support that we both receive from council, the city manager and the mayor really makes our job easier. I think by these results is from a positive react or interaction we have with city council. And I'm very grateful. And I think I can speak for Chief Sobek that we're very happy that we have the support that we have. I, I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Yeah. You know, if I can just echo that too, the resources that we have, you know, the, not only the AEDs and a Lucas, uh, you know, chest compression device, but then the OXone that we carry, you know, for overdosing, uh, people. So, uh, you guys have provided us with the resources that we need. Uh, like in a small community, uh, if you're in a bigger community, you're not going to, you're not going to have the resources available to you or they might be available, but they're not going to get to you, uh, in time. So uh, the matter of proximity that we have and as far as being able to reach out to, uh, anywhere in the tips of our jurisdiction, along with the resources and the tools that we have, uh, obviously have made us successful in some of these areas. So, uh, like Chief Vogel said, we do appreciate your support and your resources uh, and your backing. So that means a lot to us.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief Vogel and Sobek. Does anyone else have anything for either the chiefs tonight? Okay. Thank you guys both very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you. You as well. All right. We'll now move on to new business this evening. Emergency purchase of new lift station pump for Colonial Acres Lift Station.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. Uh, we had a recent failure at our lift station, uh, one of our lift stations out in Colonial Acres, uh, had a similar pump failure. Uh, this pump, uh, is manufactured by Barnes. It's an explosion proof pump that was pulled and replaced. So we could it then be taken to Jet for service to see if it was repairable, um, for teardown and analysis. We currently have no spare. If there were a failure, uh, which is a very likely possibility for purchase through Jet Pump, there was a pump that they had available that was what led to this being an emergency purchase. Uh, this is a budget expenditure can be purchased from, uh, for the amount of $5,401.52. That's including a $225 fee for them to analyze the pump that we took to them. Uh, this purchase is being made with equipment miscellaneous account 592 dot 557 dash slash nine seven seven. And the quote from Jet Pump, option B1 is attached for review. With also some, uh, other items, I believe you have in your packet there of the new pump.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
I was wondering, Mr. Bernie, uh, the, the analysis that will take place on the old pump, what do you, uh, hope to gain from that?
Uh, essentially they, they'll check it out. They'll tear the whole thing down and then hopefully that will be a rebuilt pump. But instead of waiting, we want to have one on the shelf here at all times because we're, in case it's not rebuildable, we want to have the one that's brand new to come in and actually in case one were to fail and this few weeks window before it was council meeting, we had one ready to go on standby.
That's, yeah, that certainly makes sense. I was wondering if your, your objective was to, to repurchase it in the event that they were rebuildable.
If it can be rebuilt. Yeah. And whatever parts might be needed, they'll, they'll let us know. Uh, there could be several components on it that are completely failed and they might end up scrapping it for all we know. So.
Is that a pump that, uh, that's able to be used in any of the other lift stations?
Uh, no, it is not. Unfortunately, uh, we, we have.
Yeah, I wish we had that.
They're all universal, but.
Yes. Right. I know. Yeah, that's unfortunate. Okay.
Some of them, some of them are getting in line, but yeah, they're not all universal, unfortunately.
Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, two points. Uh, the first one is in the, uh, motion, you are asking for waiver of section two dash two two four of the city, a South Line Code of Ordinances. Um, no advantage to the city will result from a competitive bid. Would you please provide some groundwork and some factual information for supporting that portion of the motion?
Yes. Uh, so the, this, this pump, I would like as kind of aforementioned here by, uh, Councilmember Kibble, the, I would like to have a uniformity with all these pumps. Unfortunately, we don't. Due to the nature of this being a Barnes pump, uh, the, the configuration of the pump, the wiring, all the, everything involved to make this pump work properly would only be that we could use the Barnes pump. And it's unfortunate that we, we would have to gut a lot of the upper controls within the lift station to make other pumps work. And the Barnes pumps are not, not to say that they're not a good pump. They are. We're, we're getting a few years out of them, I'm sure. But due to the nature of this, there's like a side, uh, bracket that's on this pump and then everything that's entailed above the pump that runs the pump, all the, all the wiring and, and everything else. There's no other pump that we can just put in there without doing a lot of other work. And they're, they're side by side. There's two pumps in the lift station and they're both Barnes's. So in this particular lift station, this is basically the only option we have.
May I move forward, Mr. Mayor?
Certainly. Councilmember Kurzweil?
Thank you. Um, I would like to move to waive section two dash two two four of the city of South Lyon Code of Ordinances. Approval purchases or contracts over 2,000, uh, competitive bidding for purchases or bidding over 5,000 because no advantage to the city will result from competitive bidding.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Walton?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kurzweil?
Yes.
Hellcat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
Yes. I'd like to move to approve the purchase of a new explosion proof Barnes submersible pump for the lift station at Colonial Acres for $5,401.52 underlying item 592 557 dash nine seven seven.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kurzweil, supported by Councilmember Kennedy. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you again, please lead us in a roll call vote?
Kurzweil?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Hellcat?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You? Motion passes. Found a new business this evening. Purchase and installation of new stairs and railing for the wet well at the clean water plant, including demolition of the failing and increasingly dangerous stairwell, which is steel and has deteriorated. Sounds like something out of a Resident Evil movie. I don't know if any of you guys have seen it. But it's spooky.
Yes, indeed it is. The stairs to access the well for the clean water plant have started to fail and are in need of replacement. This is a budgeted item that can be purchased from the capital improvement account. 592 557 dot nine seven zero. I have met multiple contractors over the past several months. Only one contractor unfortunately has responded. Uh, and seemed interested in getting in there and replacing these. Uh, they have furnished a proposal to make this repair. Included in this proposal by Titus to replace the failing wet well stairs. Um, the total for the amount with labor and materials comes to 27,700. Um, let's just take a moment to talk about the stairs. These are, these are a fiber grade material. They're basically, uh, kind of like a plastic reinforced fiberglass. Uh, there, there's many, many advantages to using this type of stairwell. Uh, obviously what I like most is its corrosive, uh, resistance, uh, but it's slip resistant. It's electrically and thermally uh, non-conductive. There's a whole litany of things that make this the right fit for these, uh, stairs. Uh, anytime I go down those stairs, I'm like, hmm, it's, it's basically the, the, the good joke recently was when it's painted and that's like the most structural integrity on it is the paint after 75 coats. And you can't paint it anymore. Maybe we should do something else. So yeah, that's kind of where we're at. These are pretty unsafe. So I'm hoping to get the, this is kind of a low hanging fruit that I'd like to try to get addressed, obviously.
No, I agree. Thanks, Doug. Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead. Oh, your virtual, your virtual hand was up.
Yeah, I gotta lower, I gotta lower that, Your Honor.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Um, I just, I work for an engineering firm, so this makes me concerned. Um, how safe is that? I'm a little worried about safety and how soon can you get these stairs? Because if our people are going up and down that, that's pretty scary.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty scary. Uh, it's pretty safe. It's pretty, the last stair is not safe. The one of the, a couple of the rungs are in really, really bad shape. I would have basically just red tagged it had I been really, really concerned, but I, I, I check them quite, quite frequently. I use them. And the staff doesn't go down them all the time, all the time. But, uh, they're, they're fairly safe. Uh, and the good news, I did talk to the contractor. I reached out to them today just to kind of get a timeframe. Uh, so two to three weeks, they'll have the submittals, everything set. And then, um, less than five to seven weeks, they'll have the stairs here and ready to go. So that's the game plan anyways.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
I'd like to, uh, make the motion that we approve purchase of the installation of fiberglass stairs and rail. Wow. Uh, clean water plant is, as per the proposed, uh, provided by, or proposal, excuse me, by Titus for the amount of $27,700 using account 592 557 970.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kibble, supported by Councilmember Kennedy. Do we have any further discussion?
I have a question.
Councilmember Richards, go right ahead.
Doug, the one that's the one that's failed and obviously it's pretty old. Would you hazard a guess at how many years that's been and was it? Had did it have stainless steel components or was it merely cadmium coated mild steel?
It looked to me to be just regular steel stairs, Councilmember Richards. I would say it's probably the age of the plant, but I'm not 100% certain. I wouldn't be shocked if they were 50 years old, but I don't know for sure exactly how old they are. I just know that there's no way in the world we can coat them anymore and they're in pretty bad shape. So.
Oh, yeah, I I would say so. Yeah, I just wondered the details.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I don't know the exact age of the stairs other than way older than me, probably.
Anyone else have anything for Doug before we vote on this? Okay, great. City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Richards?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Walton? I'm sorry, didn't hear you. Walton?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I couldn't hear you. Dill?
Yes.
Hellcat?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on to number three this evening, which will be the Lake Street Cruising 2021. Chief Sobek, I'm going to give you the lead on this.
You're muted, chief.
Chief, you're still on mute somehow.
Yeah, well, thank you. Yeah, sorry. Technology, okay. This is brought me forth by the event organizers, Deb and Doug Cook, who are just awesome to work with, by the way. On behalf of the Lake Street Cruising Committee, like to host monthly cruising shows. As you know, in 2020, these along with the Motor Fest was canceled because of the COVID concerns. And it looks like that we are slowly coming out of that. But before you as the the agenda note, I have all the documentation minus the insurance document, which in the years past, they have always prior to about sixty days beforehand, they will get it to them. I spoke with Deb Cook today and she's going to provide that to the PD very shortly, but she assures me it's coming. Obviously, we talked about the event protocol, the COVID nineteen protocols, the road closures. Getting permission from the Oakland County Road Commission to close those roads. The event's going to take place on Lake Street between Lafayette and Reese and then certain segments of Well Street on the days there from six thirty to nine thirty PM, all except the last date of September twenty second. Well, that would be from six to nine thirty PM. As you'll see in the in the agenda note and the the premier, the parade event application. What I've done is Paul and I had a discussion about passing this around to all the city departments just so just to see if there's any issues or concerns that they may have besides the PD. So I sent to the fire department, the DPW and the city hall. They all signed off on it and checked off on it. So if you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have just a few questions. Um, I think this is, I don't know if I have a blank on this, but that some of the how some of the street on Lake Street that's blocked off is in front of houses, right? Residential houses?
Yes.
And I know that there were some concerns from those residents before. I just wonder how do we notify them and what accommodations do we make for them?
You know, that's a good. That's a good. That's a good question. We can do is normally in the past, we've gotten the signatures from those homes. What I will do is I will go out there and fetch those signatures to make sure it's okay. They haven't had any issues in the years past, so I just assume, but that's a good point that you bring up. Councilmember Dill, and I will make sure that that gets done before the event.
Well, there I I know that there was a concern. I know a woman that was very concerned that she couldn't get to her house and had sent emails to city council on that before. And I know that there's at least one new resident there. So I don't want it to come as a complete shock to them that all of a sudden they can't get to their house.
Fair enough. Absolutely.
So there is that. And then for these, for this and the Motor Fest, who's responsible for like policing and emergency and things like that as far as like costs for that? Is that just something that we handle or do they pay for some of that? How does that work?
No, as far as the policing, we we monitor the situation. We do not have to hire any extra officers there. It's part of our, you know, the public relations that we will go down there. We will assist with placing the barricades. And we will just monitor and walk through from time to time throughout the events.
And then the last thing, and I know that it's nearly impossible because I helped work at the farmers markets several times last year. But is there any way to actually enforce these COVID protocols when people are outside and if there's crowds? I mean, is there? I mean, do we really have? I mean, do we really think that's going to happen? I mean.
Well, I guess it all depends on how far we actually want to take it. The one of the questions and concerns that we do. Well, one of the issues that we have that we're still trying to work through is so many people are actually you know, they're vaccinated now and so they're they're much more protected. And we're not going to get into whether or not you agree or don't agree with that. But I mean, as long as people are are being civil with each other, they're trying to control there's the distance and everything. We'll be downtown to kind of monitor and like I don't want this to follow everything on on the event organizers because they have enough to do during the time, but we will be down there to try and maintain some type of, I guess, normalcy is is what you is what we call it.
Are we asking that they have signs or can they use the ones from the farmers markets or anything to remind people that even though they're outside that that's a requirement?
Oh, yeah, we can actually. I'll talk to to Deb and Doug Cook and see what we can do about that as far as other protocols that we have in place, but it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, thanks so much.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead. And then I'll come to you, Councilmember Kennedy.
I'm I'm really happy that to see some kind of semblance of normalcy. This will this will take us a long ways towards seeing that there is an end to this at some point. Just as to Lisa's point about the the people that are on that that little stretch of West or East Lake. Last couple of years, I think that they had made some accommodations for them to park at the end of the street at Wells so that nobody was blocked out of being able to get in or out of their home. So that was the one of the accommodations they had made for people that were concerned about wanting to get to the store or whatever it might have been. So.
Yeah, there was. Yeah, they also parked on the south side of a ree street there on the side there where the gravel is. And so we've had some we had some vehicles and I think there was actually some signage and that people know that they could park their vehicles there during the event in case they needed to get out for whatever reason.
Yes, actually, I meant Reese, not Wells. Yeah, you're right. That's all I had. Thanks.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to mention the the sandwich board signs that you've had in the past there, Chris, and also the fact that we've talked about it before, and I think you already have it. There's a checklist that you go through to make sure that those aren't overlooked as part of the the prep for those events. So that the signs do go up and the residents do have the parking reserved for them.
Sure. Will do. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would like to say something.
Certainly, Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
In view of the fact that we're weighing in on this, just like to mention that during the course of this week, I would like to have yourself and myself and get together with Laura, Attorney Lisa, number two, Hammett, okay? In view of the a number of issues that haven't been brought up, really. I read through this Department of Health and Human Services directive from Elizabeth Hurtel, the director of the agency and I I'm I'm very worried about a few things regarding this and I hope we can. We hope we can look this over and get assurances that certain pitfalls or danger zones will be avoided in this. I love the Kai show, but I've got some serious concerns. Let's put it that way. Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the Lake Street Cruising application and resolve that Lisa Dayton, City Clerk Treasurer, is hereby authorized to make application to the Road Commission for Oakland County on behalf of the City of Southland in the county of Oakland, Michigan. For the necessary permits to conduct the Lake Street Cruising on May twenty sixth, June twenty third, August twenty fifth and September twenty second, 2021, and the related closure road closures. Lake Street between Lafayette Street and Ree Street, North Wells Street immediately south of the north entrance to the Wells Street parking lot to the alley that extends from South Wells Street to Lafayette Street from six thirty PM to nine thirty PM. Except September twenty second, the closure at will begin at six PM. And that the City of Southland and the county of Oakland, Michigan will faithfully fulfill all permit requirements and shall save harmless indemnify, defend and represent the board against any and all claims for bodily injury and property damage and any other claims arising out of or related to operation authorized by such permits as issued. Was a mouth port. Houseport.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble. Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy for for reading that. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on this this evening? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Dill?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Hellcat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. We'll move on to new business Motor Fest 2021 this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, this is it kind of goes along with the Lake Street Cruising as opposed to having it on July. They will not. They will not have the Wednesday evening meeting in July, but they will have a on July thirty first, Saturday from six AM to seven PM, some roads will be closed. Lafayette Street between Whipple Street and Liberty and Lake between Washington and Ree Street with a proper signage. COVID nineteen protocols in place, very similar to the Lake Street Cruising. It's like everything there is attached as far as the the outlay and the photos and the 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 car show registration and all the applications to the Oakland County Sheriff's Department are actually the Oakland County Road Commission. And like the Lake Street Cruising, I pass this to the FD, the Fire Department, the DPW, the City Hall as well. They are all on board and we will take a look at some of those issues that we mentioned for the Lake Street Cruising and make sure everything is in place.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I had seen that Doug had been in the meeting initially, but he's long since left. Does anyone know whether or not Oakland County Parks and their trailer or is there going to be a bandstand set up during the motor motorsport?
Yes.
Okay.
There's also going to be food trucks as well.
All right, that's great to hear. All right. Thank you very much. With that, I'll make the motion that we approve this. I'm not reading that whole thing.
I'll support. And I'll support him not reading it, too.
Thank you.
Give a motion by Councilmember Kibble, supported by Councilmember Walton. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you lead us in a roll call vote, please?
Kibble?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Hellcat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. With that, we'll move on to the budget this evening. Oh, yeah, that's fine. Anyone?
I just want to update something, Mr. Mayor, that we will be making the changes based upon the budget meeting that we held last week and the recommendations and rerunning those sheets that are actually changing and giving them to council. We will allow, obviously, at this time at any council meeting for budget discussion if anybody wants to bring anything else up. Or if anybody wants to email Patricia or I or anything regarding some corrections or something that was discussed or want to bring up again.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Paul, do you have a sense of how long it'll be before the the updates come?
I guess it's probably in about two weeks. If we don't have it by the next meeting, we'll have it before before the next one. So you can review it.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll move on to our second public comment. Please remember to state your name and address and either raise your virtual hand or your real hand. So our city clerk Deaton can see you.
We do have one rant, one I'm sorry, one hand raised, Ryan Layer.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. I wanted to thank Jim Runstead's office for their wonderful comment regarding my cleanup. And I wanted to thank her and and tell her it's my pleasure to serve my community and keep it as beautiful as possible. And I would also like to thank Chief Sobek and Chief Vogel for their extenuating wonderful leadership that they have given the command staff to allow all the officers and the firefighters that saved this lady's life. It it just goes to the true testament that we have hundred percent, five star, top notch public service in our community. And I don't think there's any other community that I have seen that matches ours. And you know, it may it may come, the officers may have helped, but the command staff and the leadership is what makes it the absolute top notch that both departments have. And both of the chiefs are, I think we're very lucky to have both of them. Extremely lucky and 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 to Mayor Powchat, love the Resident Evil thing. That's it. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. City Clerk Deaton, did we have anyone else looking to participate in public comment this evening?
We do not.
Okay, this time we'll close public comment and move on to the managers report. City Managers, I'll like.
A couple of items, one update regarding the parks and rec commission that will be bringing before city council the Parks and Rec master plan that they have for McCady Park for approval and also regarding the purchase of the handicap accessible equipment for that park. Also, we're going to continue to move forward with our future plans to develop the systematic means to improve our roads. Looking at a couple of different scenarios for funding those improvements. So expect that at an upcoming city council meeting. Also, for Councilman Richards, if he wants to contact me regarding any of those health concerns or those items regarding the order for gatherings and face masks that was issued on March thirty first, I'd be happy to meet with him to talk about some of those items or discuss those items. I don't not sure if it's really a good idea as far as setting up a meeting between Council Richards, the mayor and the and the city attorney. Just yet, I think it'd be wise that I go over what some of those concerns may be and to see if we can address those. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything for City Managers, I'll like this evening? All right, Councilmember Walton, go ahead. All right. It was a race.
Sorry, didn't mean to make it a race. I just have a quick question that was brought to me. With the COVID numbers going up, I was asked if we would consider moving the citywide garage sales back a little bit. I know there's some people I I offered that they don't have to pay for a permit to have garage sales for the summer, but they feel that they only do it during the citywide garage sale weekend and they asked if we would move it back maybe a few weeks. To put it out there.
You know, I think it's something, you know, potentially to consider. This has been highly publicized for the last couple of months. We fielded, you know, hundreds of calls on this, people inquiring, you know, people asking questions about that. We can't necessarily stop people from having garage sales. It doesn't mean that this council can't necessarily consider trying to restrain many people from holding them or, you know, holding those at a later date. We do consider, you know, individuals having having those garage sales at a later date and not charging them for it. I think would be something else additionally we could do, but I'm definitely open to discussion or what the feelings are of city council.
I think.
I didn't know if you had.
Hey, if we just sat here and approved a bunch of festivals to say we can't have a garage sale in a couple of weeks, I don't really know the answer to that.
Okay, Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, you know, it's gonna be kind of hard to tell the garage sales people that you can't have a garage sale, but you can walk down Lake Street and shoulder to shoulder. Shoulder to shoulder with a bunch of people looking at cars. Um I I know that the people that do estate sales and 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 garage sales, I had one last year myself. And that was before uh the vaccine. And I'll tell you, I, it was a steady stream, everybody um. Social distanced. I mean, I think people are pretty savvy about this. Uh everybody who came to my garage sale last summer wore a mask. Um when they were on my property. Uh everybody social distanced. Uh people waited in cars if there were. A lot of people at 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 my house, like, you know, because I had stuff all over. It wasn't just in the driveway, it was in the front yard, it was in the side yard. So that everybody could social distance, you know, when they were garage sale shopping. People made it a point to sit in their car and wait until people left. So I found it to be a very, very responsible uh group of individuals. And when you're garage sales shopping, you you're not there. For three hours. I mean, you're there maybe for fifteen minutes and you're gone. And um. I I just don't, I just don't see where the risk is. It's an outside event. Uh nobody's inside and outside's where you need to be anyway. So I would just like to. Say, I I think we move forward with the date because I know a lot of people are planning on it, so. Thank you.
Yep. Councilmember Kibble, did you have something? Go ahead.
Yes, I did, actually. Uh. Much to that that conversation, I I think people have their own common sense. If you feel uncomfortable, if you feel that people are not masked enough for your your liking. You step away. The the car show will be much the same kind of a thing. You don't go to to places where people are rubbing against each other by a car. You go to the places that are open and um. If it doesn't seem comfortable for you, walk away. So uh. On another light, Paul, I was wondering, have you found out anything further about the old uh library building development that um? You know, that you had selected?
No, I haven't. I haven't gotten any additional um correspondence from those individuals, but I will. I will let council know when I do. I've tried to make contact with them, but not heard anything back recently, so I don't, I don't know what the reasons are.
I'm um, I know that that you're the lead on this whole thing, but um council, actually, I feel. Is the ones that are really approving this whole project, so. I'd really like to have, I'd like to have a lot more understanding of. The information exchange and what what the um criterion for the price points and stuff are, so. Um I'm really looking forward to that, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just really quickly, just, um I wanted to um. See if we could close a loop on the um the people who came and spoke last at our last meeting. And they were very interested to find out if Laura had given us that forty five day notice about the um the group home. And I just wondered if you happened to be able to look into that yet. And if you remember what I'm talking about.
Yes, I do, and I believe Lisa, you can answer that about, I don't believe we've received anything from them as of as of that date.
We have not received anything as of today.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Oh, as a product of that information, um is is anyone? Feeling that we should try to be an obstacle to to what's going on? Or what's being proposed, I suppose?
It's not really our position as a city that we can actually do anything about it. I mean, if you choose to do something like that, um the legality of that is something that should be considered. Maybe our city attorney can comment on that. But it's not something that is regulated by municipality, long as they follow zoning ordinances and sign. And the signage, those items go before the state of Michigan. We are not not allowed to regulate that.
My my concern actually is that we had a narrative that. No one has any understanding of whether or not what was being said had any validity or not, so we're. You know, if if anyone is coming to any kind of conclusions. I don't know how you're basing it on known facts, so. Um that that caused me a little bit of concern and to me, I'm getting much. Stronger a sense that they simply don't want to end up having the distraction of that at the end of their drive. Um so. Um I I don't want us to end up being a vehicle that allows them to decide who gets to live by them, so.
City Attorney Hamami, did you have anything to add to that? Are we good to move on?
No, I think Paul hit the nail on the head. We really don't have jurisdiction over uh that type of home, provided they meet the requirements in in the law.
Thank you for that.
If I could just say, though, I, it does bother me that Laura has an obligation to give notice. And they haven't bothered to do so. That that's really irksome.
Yeah, I don't disagree, and it might not be a bad idea for us to reach out and and get a status. It might be that it's still in the pipeline, since I don't believe construction has started. I don't think people are moving in yet. So it might just be that they haven't sent it yet. I don't know that there'd be any harm with us reaching out to them, but I don't know that that's a basis. Um to to obstruct this this home or at least attempt to interfere with it.
I I will say I've had occasion to be on Laura's site a number of times, and it's not a very pleasant experience, so. Uh maybe they're just mired in stuff, or maybe they're just not really good at exchanging information. I don't really know, but um. They are pretty clumsy with the the transmission of info.
Anyone else with anything for the city manager this evening? Okay, great. We're going to move on to council comments. Um and Councilmember Walton, why don't you get us started tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I couldn't get myself off of the unmute there for a moment. Um the only things I want to say tonight is, um again, thank you to the police and fire department for their presence. And taking care of their our community and our uh woman that they saved. And also, um thank you to Ryan Layer for his cleanup efforts. We do appreciate that. And hope to see people at the spring cleanup here coming up uh from McCady Park uh or for the. The creek through McCady Park on the, what is that, the Saturday? So they're looking forward to that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Councilmember Richards, you go ahead.
Uh yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. I just want to make a uh first uh a comment about uh. The upcoming cleanup, uh it's going to be on Sunday, uh not Saturday, um. And I'm hoping for a good turnout, but Larry hasn't got confirmation, I don't think, on quite enough people yet. Uh over the past few years. Be it be it noted that uh we often targeted a few spots that weren't necessarily in the Yurkis drain. Uh area, okay, that were citywide, okay, but uh. They hadn't been attended to in a long time and they needed cleaning. Whether we'll get enough people to do all of this uh this year or not, I don't know. I went and inspected a couple, three, about five places. And uh Waters Edge Apartments, which is usually terrible, was perfect. It was beautiful. Like it had been cleaned up and manicured. Uh just a little while ago. It's usually very impacted with trash. Along the fence line there, and uh so was Colonial Acres. It appeared to be very clean. Uh. Uh one of the worst areas I I inspected uh is uh. At the bridge there near uh. Hungry Howies. It's always bad, but it's exceptionally bad this year. I hope we can really get the crew together and get in there. Um but I I'd help I help out with Larry as best I can. And uh I'm hoping for a good turnout this Sunday. I hope for good weather. Um. Uh. Next, I'd just like to mention. Uh. I hope we can, we can have uh. Oh, I don't know. I guess I guess I better cut it off at that. I'm not thinking clearly on it. I guess that's all I'll make a comment on. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Richards, thank you. Councilmember Kurtswell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank all the hardworking employees of the D P W department. For all the work that they do to help the city look great. I don't know if anybody has noticed, except for maybe me, is that they've been in there trimming some of those really huge trees. That really, really needed to be trimmed for about five or six years. Uh some of those branches were just. Uh I would hate to think what would have happened if we had another uh horrible uh storm in the city. It it those, some of those branches were just horrible. They were huge, huge. And uh the, so the park has been cleaned up and that's good, so I want to thank them for that. Want to thank them for getting the fountain running over in Paul Baker Park. It it looks absolutely great over there so far this year. I'd also like to thank D P W for their assistance on the enlarged freestanding frames. That are throughout the city that were installed for the Culture Arts Commission for uh Poetry Month. Uh they're getting a great response. Once again, D P W is just the go to department. When uh we need things done in the city and they do such, such a good job. Speaking of organizations in the city, uh this is just, I I just love getting this every quarter. This is from the Historical Society. And uh this newsletter uh features the American flag. And they just did a really, really, really good job. And talking about the history of the American flag, giving some good trivia points about the American flag. The history of the flag, they just did a great job. And I would like to encourage everybody, my check's in the mail. Um to join the Historical Society, you know, it's only ten dollars for a single person or fifteen for a family. You know, doggone it, come on, people, let's keep our money in town and let's support our organizations. Uh so this is just a great little uh quarterly newsletter to get. I just love, love getting it. It's called The Witch's Chatter, so thank you to everyone uh over there at the South Lion uh Historical Society. So thank you. Good night, everybody. We'll see you at the end of the month.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtswell. I completely agree on the quarterly newsletter as well. Uh Councilmember Kennedy?
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh tonight, I want to talk about the covid vaccination event. That took place at Colonial Acres on March twenty third through the twenty fifth. During that event, seven hundred and sixty six friends, neighbors and relatives from our community were able to receive their vaccinations locally. It all began with a phone call I made to Ready Nursing Solutions. After reading an article about the service they provided at Abbey Park in conjunction with the Oakland County Health Division. I asked if they would hold a similar event for the residents at Colonial Acres. A representative met Sue Brock and me at the location, verified it was appropriate. And said, we'll give you three days, you run it, you organize it, and we'll pass out the shots. And so tonight, I'd like to recognize all of the folks who made this possible. Many of the people I'm going to recognize actually volunteered for multiple assignments in order to make this a reality. First, I want to thank the staff of Ready Nursing Solutions for their professionalism, kindness and hard work during the event. Next, I want to recognize the volunteers who delivered the flyers announcing the event to almost one thousand residents in Colonial Acres. This group of volunteers included Alice Schmitter, Nancy Ward, Christine McNally, Frank Severn, Peggy Booker. Gary Kibler, Stephen Kennedy, Sarah Kennedy, Julie Kennedy, Bill Charles, City Manager Paul Zelnick. D D A Director Nate Mack, Evelyn Lawrence from the Water Department, Carol Brandon from City Hall. County Commissioner Phil Wyper and Pam Wyper. Councilmember Glenn Kibble and Cindy Kibble and Mayor Dan Pelchat and Meredith Pelchat. After the folks in Colonial Acres had registered, we contacted Carrie Kavanaugh at the South Lion Center for Active Adults. In order to expand registration to other members of the community. She brought in volunteers to staff a call center and contacted folks to sign them up. And so I'd like to recognize the efforts of Carrie Kavanaugh, interim director at the Senior Center and her volunteers. Rita Allen, Kathy Campbell, Judy Chris, Sally Kinney, Sharon Loftus, Gail McDonald, Joe Regal. Joan Shiford and Sue Talonin for their efforts. They not only signed up the folks for the event, but also reported their information so they can be registered online later. Over at the Colonial Acres Clubhouse for phases one to four, another group of volunteers was collecting the forms from residents. That did not have access to a computer and couldn't register online. This group of volunteers was led by Denise Marie and included Deanna Norwood, Alice Schmitter and Anna Redman. The information that was collected at the clubhouse and the senior center was provided to another volunteer. Julie Kennedy, who entered the information and registered all of those individuals online. During the same period, we had another group of volunteers reaching out into the neighborhoods. And surrounding areas to sign up folks so that no appointment time slot was left unfilled. This group of volunteers included Councilmember Lisa Dill, Councilmember Glenn Kibble, Mayor Dan Pelchat. County Commissioner Phil Wyper, as well as myself. Once the vaccination event began on March twenty third, groups of volunteers staffed the event on various shifts throughout the three day event. This group of volunteers included Mike Flores, Deanna Norwood, Jane Giordano, Mike Giordano. Denise Marie, Nancy Ward, Judy Keeling, Mary Pousard, Gary Kibler, Alice Schmitter. Laura Myers, John McGraw, Jackie Bettke, Jane Severn, Karen Vassel. Bill Aldinger, Gail Newman, Jill Gardner, Connie Williams, Donna Tilly. Gloria Pointer, Katie Kay, Mark Stefanski. Barb Kibler, Anna Redman, Kathy Sturgowski, Jim Roychline, Stacy Clavitt. Freya Derry, Janice Bruniak, Peggy Booker, Janice Laers and Dorothy Brown. And finally, I want to recognize two additional volunteers. The first is George Birchmeyer, who managed the flow of people in and out of that building for three straight days. As well as managed the flow of cars in and out of the parking lot during that period. And finally, I want to recognize Sue Brock. Sue volunteered to take on the huge task of taking the hundreds of phone calls and scheduling the appointments for all of those who wanted to be vaccinated. She also recruited many of the volunteers I have mentioned tonight and oversaw their efforts during that three day period. Finally, I want to recognize those folks in our community who provided lunch for the nurses and volunteers during that three day period. This includes Jamie Gilbert for purchasing and Cory Bala from the South Lion Hotel for providing and delivering lunch one day. Ray and Matt Klaus for purchasing and providing lunch on another. And finally, an anonymous donor who purchased lunch and Mike Corano and the Corner Social for providing and delivering it as well. Again, at the end of the three days, seven hundred and sixty six friends, neighbors and relatives from our community. Were able to receive their vaccinations locally. Not one time slot was wasted, and when the nurses were running ahead of schedule. I contacted additional folks from the waiting list and was able to add them to the schedule as well. At the end of the three days, not one vaccination shot was wasted. Mr. Mayor, I apologize for taking a a bit more time this evening for my council comments than usual. But I felt it was important to recognize all of the individuals who made this possible, the majority of whom are residents of this city. It was an extremely successful community event, and it truly makes me proud to call this community my home. All I have is from here.
You're a rock star, buddy.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Um Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that, I mean, you you just smoked that whole event. That was.
Oh, yeah.
That was fantastic. Um I'm, when you brought up the idea of the senior center, I wondered. Is there any potential for that to have any more legs where you might end up getting more. Uh throughput to to use that building and that that architecture?
If I could respond to that, just, I have talked to the interim director. She is trying to schedule a similar event. She needs approval from about seven or eight people to get that authorization. And I don't think so that she hasn't yet.
I know that there's still an awful lot of people that are really kind of grasping at straws, trying to get get a shot, so that would be helpful. But you, that was a great thing. Good, good job.
That all you got tonight, Councilmember Kibble?
Uh yes, I think that's enough. I'm looking forward to seeing people out and. Actually, I do did want to say that it's fun walking around right now, uh you know, with spring in the air and um the the weather's turning. Everything's budding up and you're starting to see an awful lot more activity going on outside. So um covid has really kind of kicked our butts for a bit to to ruin our our good times, but um. Tomorrow is going to end up being terrific. Every, we're going to get through this and everybody's going to end up make making themselves whole and more, so. Um that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble. Councilmember Dill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I don't want to belabor the point, but I.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to belabor the point, but I just want to say that we do a lot of stuff on council that keeps the lights on and, and might seem boring to people. And there isn't that, you know, there's always, there aren't that many opportunities to really make a different, like a huge difference in our community. And I just wanted to thank Steve, I mean, for stepping up and making that happen. That was unbelievable. And for, and I feel like you letting me call other people to give them, get them appointments, it made me feel so good. I, I was almost crying every time I talked to somebody. And these people afterwards came to, came to my house, called me on the phone. Thank you so much for getting me into this, into this event. So I just want to thank you for letting me be able to do that. So that was just a great event.
We appreciated the help.
And then I just wanted to, I also wanted to say, I've taken some walks around town, and I'm really enjoying the poetry around town, taking pictures with that and posting it. And then the very last thing is, I wanted to call out our library because this is really interesting because our library and my company happened to do the same thing, and we're in the same news article together. And I just found it really interesting that during the, last May, when the, when the dam failures happened in Midland, it wiped out a, a whole library for a high school called Windover High School in Midland that was a specialized high school that accommodates teens who experience homelessness, abuse, and neglect. They lost everything in their library, all their books, and they called for donations, and they, and our library stepped up and donated so many books to this library, delivered them up there, and this article, it really went on and on about them for several paragraphs. So I just wanted to thank our library for making us look good. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dill. You know, I think it's just a great night for all of us to really just take a moment. You know, it's, it's an honor to be able to serve this community next to all of you. It's an honor to work with our first responders, our DPW departments, all these folks. These are, these are incredibly great people, and they're a great part of our community. And I think there was a lot of fireworks in this meeting to bring that up for all of us. And so, you know, I reminded us a couple of weeks ago that the weather's breaking. Of course, Michigan is going to give us a little bit of a fight here until the good, the real warm weather gets here. But I just want to encourage people to get outside, try and, try and get active, and, and we do got to keep up the fight for those of us that haven't been vaccinated, or the folks that are looking to get vaccinated, or, you know, it's going to take a team effort here to, to put this virus down, and, and it's obviously reminded us here that we're not out of the clear just yet. So, you know, it's an honor to work with all of you. I hope you all have a great week. With that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you. Move to adjourn.
Thank you all. Have a great night.